So I'm just going to start by introducing the Women's Committee to you. So my name is Sarah Smith, I'm Chair of the Women's Committee. The role of the Women's Committee is to promote the role of women in the economics profession in the UK. So there are many ways we could promote gender issues. This session here, you'll be relieved or perhaps disappointed to know that we're going to follow a rather conventional economics approach. And we're going to focus on evidence on the status of women in academic economics with some research on pay and rank, and also some research on the submission of women and academic economists to the last ref. So that's the approach or journey of the Women's Committee. So we're interested in collecting evidence on the representation of women in academic economics. And there's a biennial survey of departments of economics which then allows us to say something about the representation of women across the UK and at different levels in the academic profession. We then identify issues that might need addressing. So last year, the focus of this session was on undergraduate economics. And one of the issues that came out was that girls were much less likely to be offered A-level economics than boys were. And A-level economics is the main channel through which students progress into economics at university. So if we're worried about why there are so few women studying economics at university, we might need to reach out to schools. So following on from that, we also identified possible activities that we might want to take to address some of the issues that are raised. So we've done mentoring for junior researchers, we're supporting departments with Athena Swan, and we're also, as I said, starting to think about reaching out to schools to think about improving the flow of people into undergraduate economics. So I've only very recently taken over as Chair of the Women's Committee. I took over from Silvana who went on to serve on the Monetary Policy Committee. And before that, Karen Mumford was Chair from 2009 to 2016. So yeah, she did a huge amount of work to sustain the biennial survey. And I think that really has made the Women's Committee quite given its powerful voice in terms of thinking about women in academic economics. So I'm delighted to welcome Karen back to present a paper. So she's going to talk about pay and rank in economics departments. And then Christina, who worked as a research assistant on a number of the surveys, is going to present a paper on ref submissions. So we're going to have those two papers. And then we're going to have two discussants which are going to comment on the papers but also comment more widely on some of the issues that they raise. And then if there's time, we'll open up the floor for questions. So thanks very much, I'd like to introduce Karen.
Right, you can hear me, can't you? This is a joint paper with myself and Christina. We started it when I was Chair of the Women's Committee and Christina was the PhD student rep on the Women's Committee. Just to set a little bit of context, the Women's Committee started collecting data on UK academic economics in 1996. In 1996, women were 18% of the workforce, they're now 28% in 2016. 13% of all posts were professorial and now 28% are. And in 1996, women were 4% of the professors, now they're 16%. They were 10% of reader senior lecturers, now they're 26%. And they were 17% of lecturers and now they're 35%. So women have basically doubled their representation in the workforce. They've moved more into professorships, but they're still relatively rare amongst them. So what I'm showing you here is within gender, what the rank positions look like. So in 1996, on the left-hand side here, you can see that roughly 6%, 7% of the women were professors. And now it's closer to 20%. And up here, you can see the lecturers are declining over that time period. And for men, in contrast, scales are different. But for men, being a professor, which is the dotted line, is now the most common career grade. So all other things being equal, you're most likely to be professor now if you're a man by the time you finish. What we want to look at is pay gaps. Studies of academic pay gaps are actually comparatively rare in the literature. There was a really nice survey by Ward in 2001 looking at academic salaries in Scotland. There's a nice study in Princeton, for Princeton 2002, finding an 18 unconditional gap and a conditional gap of 8% once they control for publications and experience mainly. For the UK, there was a working party looking at ethnicity in 1999. And then they went on and used that data to look at gender pay gaps in 2005. And they found an unconditional gap of 17.7 points and a conditional gap of 9.4. Another really interesting study that's been done just recently, there might be others that I don't know of, but the LSE study is really, it's a great paper, it's well worth looking at. They found an unconditional gap of 16.5 and a conditional gap of 10.5. But different components of the study come up with different, depending on what they're conditioning on, we'll come back to that. So what we did, two years ago, between February 26th and March 28th, we sent out a survey to individual academics. It actually went out to heads of department through TUDER. And then the heads of department distributed the research link to members. We tracked it over the time period, any departments that we didn't have responses for. We got back in touch with the heads of departments and asked them to send again. It was collected in Coltrix and anonymized. We also, at the RES Conference, handed out hard copies and got another couple of dozen usable responses. We combined the data with the RES Women's Committee surveys that are done biannually and checked by the departments annually. So in total, we had 668 responses, but quite a few of them looked like people were just having a bit of a sticky beak and didn't actually fill in most of the survey. We ended up with 540 usable ones on job rank. People were more discreet about their salaries, so we only ended up with 380 that had usable information on salaries as well. So I don't want to spend a lot of time telling you this because you can have a look at the paper. Basically, our measure, our dependent variable is full-time equivalent annual salary. And on average, the males averaged 60,000 in the UK in 2016 and the women won 55,389. Sorry, the women won 52, the average was 55. It's a gap of 15 log percentage points. This is what our data looks like, in fact, the whole sample, males and females. I don't want to go through all of this, but what's interesting is you can see that there's a surge of younger women coming through the dataset and that comes up later in our regression analysis. Especially in here, maybe here, a bunch of women. So the distributions are just slightly shifted, a younger cohort of women coming through. Then another difference in the dataset is we have more women that are working on research contracts. And so there's more women with no PhDs, and then otherwise. The other thing that's really interesting, we thought, was mentoring. It's very similar for men and women. And also this competition thing, women are much more likely to say their workplaces are competitive than men. There's a whole literature on this that says that women shy away from competition, so we'll have a look at that too. But surprisingly, not that much difference on whether their workplace is cooperative. In terms of what our rank looks like, we have an over-representation of professors, male and female, in the data. In some ways, that's useful for us because it means we have 45 female professors, which gives us enough to be sensible about. In the 1999 study, they only had seven female professors. And we have an under-representation of lecturers. Earnings function, we run a very standard semi-log earnings function. So here's our wages on the left-hand side, constant term. Then we're running a pooled regression and we've got all of our characteristics that we think are associated with wages, a gender dummy and an error term. So we basically believe in a human capital story, so we think wage is going to be related to characteristics that are associated with productivity. And I'll tell you these in just a second. And then we're going to augment our earnings function with demographic characteristics, workplace characteristics, and labour market control characteristics. Here they are. So I've basically just put the columns under those types of categories. But we're running one OLS regression and these are them all, and the asterisks show how significant they are. So there's our conditional gender pay gap. Then under demographic, you can see here, these are our demographic characteristics. So we don't find any demographic variables are important for the wage gap except for gender and age. And you can see age here is really clearly significant compared to the youngest, immediate group. We'd expect that because we haven't got job rank in these regressions yet and a lot of wages associated with seniority and promotion. Here's our productivity measures. And all of these are behaving the way that we would expect, except maybe for excellent teaching score. We never got any significant response between being an excellent teacher and higher wages. These are our workplace characteristics. And up here, we've got this interaction really going down between being in a top-six department that was based on the last ref rankings, an old university which was, that it was a university before the 1992 reforms, and working in London University because of course they have London ratings as well, so there's overlaps between them. This one here, interesting, the effect's not large, but it kept coming out significant. And that's working in a more feminized workforce. And so perhaps the story is that some workplaces are a bit over-segregated and maybe a large number of women means there's less bargaining power. And then this one here, the network, that question was about, do you have a network that you can use for your research area in your workplace? And it's negative. We were expecting it to be positive, but perhaps it's a selection issue in that if you're not doing well, perhaps they encourage you to join this network so you go out and do it. Of the labour market type response characteristics we've put in there. External appointment, yeah, basically means that you were hired into your current job from an outside position. So basically, perhaps that means that you're not happy with your current job or your current employer hasn't matched your outside salary. Here is matching your outside salary, which has a really strong effect. And what we found is that not only was it very similar for males and females to have outside offers, but actually we also find, if you look in the paper, there's no significant difference between the rates of return on having an outside offer by gender. So it looks like women are going to get outside offers like men do and the departments respond to them. So it doesn't look like you've got this captive, women are not mobile, good little servants hypothesis working. Okay, so decomposing the gap, there was 15 log percentage points in the raw data. The unexplained component was nine log percentage points, the explained is 5.9 age. So roughly one-third explained, roughly two-thirds unexplained. If we decompose the explained, we find out that most of it is due to demographics and 98% of that demographic effect is due to age. So mostly, the explained component is coming at us from age differences between the gender. And there's also a little bit on this feminized workplace. We look at the unexplained component, then what's driving it is gender differences in rates of return to characteristics associated with productivity. So we're looking at a 9.1 log percentage points unexplained gender pay gap. And we think we've done a fairly good job of capturing factors that we think are characteristics that we think will be affected with pay. Job rank. Okay, so maybe there's also a difference between promotion and getting into different job ranks. So we run ordered probits. I'm just going to tell you about the characteristics that are significant. If you look in the table, you can see all the insignificant ones. So here's teaching fellows, researcher lecturer, senior lecturer professor. I've highlighted lecturer and professor so you can see the difference, yeah. Typically, we get quite tidy results across. Here's our gender pay gap. All right, here's our differences in probabilities of being in these job ranks. The males are almost 7% less likely to be lecturers and males are 10% more likely to be professors. Given that there's an academic salary difference between those job ranks, that's going to be part of the story why there's a gender difference in pay. And you can see that being older is associated with, as you get older, you're associated with higher chances of being loaded into higher ranks. You can either see it going this way or you can see it going this way. And here's our characteristics. So these are all the characteristics that are significant. So the dominant characteristics that are important for the probability of being in different job ranks are the productivity characteristics. Even here, just last degree, no PhD, publications, whatever, teaching never comes up. And then whether you work part-time and having an outside offer. And they're all moving the way you'd expect. Being more productive is associated with an increased chance of senior job rank. So we found that there's a nine log percentage point overall pay gap. We found that men are 6% less likely to be lecturers, 10% more likely to be professors. What about within rank gender pay gaps? So we did our earnings function from the first stage and we did it within each job rank. And here's our pay gaps. We're only looking at 85% and 80% significant. But even so, it looks like there's a 7% within rank gender pay gap. So men are 10% more likely to be professors. And then if they're in that pay, if they're in that rank, they're looking at having an extra 7% unexplained gender pay difference. Over time, what can we do over time? Well, Lacippi et al. looked at the UK 1999. So their dataset is no longer in existence and even if it was, we couldn't use it because of course it's confidential. But what we did was we tried as close as we could to replicate their model and see what happens to our results. So they found a pay gap of 9.4 log points. And they found at the lecturer level that there was a 6% gap within rank. And at professor level, they found three but not significant. So we found, in our last lot of data, these were the other way around. When we replicate their study, and it shows you the differences. The main differences between our study and theirs is that they have this, they use work experience and tenure as well as age. And when we tried that, we just couldn't get it to work. But when we replicate without that, we find that we would get a 10 log percentage point gap and no significant gap at the lecturer level or a really sizable gap at the professorial level. So our results suggest they're consistent with what we've done with our own model. It looks like there is now a substantial within professorial pay gap that wasn't in the literature before and no longer a substantial within lecturer pay gap. But the overall pay gap is still looking about the same. So, am I going the right timelines? Okay, so basically, we've got a nice new dataset. We combine it with the Women's Committee's dataset and it's quite rich. What we find to be really important determines the salary are productivity characteristics and we would expect that. Except for excellent teaching, which doesn't seem to come in at all. We find some workplace characteristics are also associated. We don't find any demographic stories except for gender and age. We find a substantial and significant gender pay gap in the raw data of 15 log points. And roughly a third of it is due to, is explained. And most of that is due to demographics and age. And roughly two-thirds is unexplained and most of that is due to gender differences in rewards and productivity. So we find gender is also significantly related to job rank. Males are less likely to be employed as lecturers. And they're more likely to be employed as professors. Given that we know there's a substantial pay difference between those job ranks, that's part of the story. We also find evidence at a lower conference level that within the professorial pay rank, there's a gender pay gap as well. So men are 10% more likely to be professors. And then once they're in there, they're looking at an extra 7% premium because of their gender. And really surprisingly, well, maybe not, because this is also consistent with what they've found at the LSE, the conditional pay gap hasn't changed. In fact, the pay, the LSE one they found has increased to 9%. But at 9%, it's consistent with what we have. For us, comparing to the previous UK study for all academic economists, there's no decline in the gender pay gap in 20 years, despite substantial growths of women into the workforce. But the nature of the pay gap has changed dramatically. So there's less push for women into lectureships where there's a high pay gap. There's now more push of males into professors where there's a strong pay gap in their favour. So we would conclude that this pay gap is primarily related to gender differences in returns to productivity. The unexplained nine points is primarily related to that. And that suggests that there's a role for intervention. Because we've got gender difference in promotion into rank and we've got a gender difference on pay within rank. And aid policy intervention could be having individual role reviews. Actually, go back and look at our individual CVs and do a comparison and think about where we should be and what our pay should be. Thank you very much.
Hello, thank you very much for organising this session, Sarah. So this paper that I'm presenting today is joint work with Karen Mumford from York and also Richard McManus from Canterbury Christ Church. And so what we're looking at here is we focus on the probability of being submitted to the REF, the REF, the Research Excellence Framework, which I'm sure that most of you are aware of and know it quite well. But for those of you who may not be from the UK, what the REF is, it's a national assessment exercise that judges the research quality of academic institutions in the UK. The REF is very important for institutions and departments alike because a lot of the government research funding that gets allocated depends on the REF outcomes. So if you're from the UK, you know exactly how important this is. If you're not, trust me, it's very important. In particular, we look at the determinants of the probability of being submitted to the REF. And we focus on lecturers, the lecturer grade in economics departments. So let me just start off with basically submitting to the REF, which is what I like to call the recognition phase. So this is where the researchers, the departments, the institutions get recognised for their research quality, for their work. This then leads to rewards, so in the form of extra funding from the government, but as well rewards and non-financial rewards in terms of prestige and reputation for the different institutions and departments. This then goes on to affect the research quality in the future, of course. So if you have more resources, you're probably going to be able to produce better quality research later on. So ideally, we would close this loop here and then go back to recognition where the next wave of REF is going to happen. I think it was about every six years, we're not really sure when the next one is going to be. But when the next wave of the REF, the recognition phase happens, this research quality is going to feed into that. However, there is one important step between research quality and the recognition of research quality, which is the submission decision. So departments and institutions have to decide who they are going to submit to the REF. For those of you who don't know, up until this point, the REF requirements were such that not all academics had to be submitted so the departments could choose who they wanted to submit. So in this sense, it would make, sorry, so it would make sense for departments to choose to submit only those individuals that they think would rank very, very highly in order to maximise the REF outcome. The problem is that we noticed a lot of inequalities in the REF submission rates. So before I go on to show you the breakdown of the REF submission rates for 2014 REF, I need to first tell you a little bit about the requirements of being submitted to the REF. So just really, really quickly, hopefully this will make sense to most of you. But so the idea is that if you've been a researcher or an academic for a really long time, then you are, then the department is required to submit four outputs for you in order to actually submit you into the REF. So that person has to have four outputs. We call those not early-career researchers. So these are people who have been working for a long time. And so for the REF 2014, these are people who began their independent research on or before July 31st, 2009. Moving down a row, we've got late, what we call late early-career researchers. So there's this whole group of early-career researchers. And we have late early-career researchers who began their academic independent research between August 1st, 2009 and July 31st, 2010. So these are, these dates are specific to the REF 2014. And for these individuals, the departments had to have, sorry, the individual had to have three outputs in order for the department to submit them to the REF. Moving down one more row, we've got middle early-career researchers. And for these guys, they needed to have two outputs in order to be submitted. And for people who had just started out working in academia, these are early, early-career researchers, EECRs as we call them in this paper. They were only required to have one output. And these are individuals who began independent research between August 1st, 2011 and October 31st, 2013. If you began doing your research after October 31st, 2013, you were not eligible to be entered in the REF 2014. Okay, so hopefully now you've got a good idea of our not early-career researchers and ECRs, late middle and early year, early-career researchers. Okay, so here we have submission rates. And what I'd like to point out is the difference between the female lecturer submission rates. Let me see if I can use this. What we have is a 40% submission rate among female lecturers. And among male lecturers, we have a 53% submission rate. So that's a gender gap of 13%. The other thing that I would like to point out from this table is the fact that there is a range, a large range of submission rates between those who are not early-career researchers and the early-career researchers. So for not early-career researchers, they require four outputs, remember, to be submitted to the REF. We've got a 17% rate, a submission rate to the REF 2014. For the late early-career researchers, we've got 41%, so it goes, it jumps up by quite a lot. And then again, for middle early-career researchers, we've got 53%. These numbers over here. And then for early, early-career researchers, we have the highest submission rate, which is 67%. In total, we have a 49% submission rate for all lecturers in UK institutions. So why is this a problem? I mean, we observe these inequalities. But the issue becomes what happens to these academics if they are or are not submitted into the REF? So on one hand, you may think that there are no repercussions, at least no negative repercussions of not being submitted to the REF. It is not in your It is not in your contract, you know, promotion is not based on whether or not, officially not based on whether or not you were submitted to the REF. However, given that departments and institutions receive additional resources based on the REF results, we believe that it's likely the case that there are consequences to whether you are included in the REF or not. And so you could think of, for example, there is a shift in responsibilities, so people who are submitted to the REF are more likely to be given more time for research and less time for teaching, whereas people who were not submitted may be given more time or may be given more teaching responsibilities, so that would take away from their teaching time. Resource allocation, again, it's about what you give your academic staff, so it's about time for research, but it's also about resources to, you know, travelling to conferences or research funding. And also it has an effect, we believe, it's likely to have an effect on the self-esteem and of the, of the individual being submitted to the REF or not, and also on peer recognition. So this, just so you know, that whether you were submitted or not is public information, so you can go to the REF website and see who was submitted or not for each individual academic from, sorry, well, you can see who was submitted from all of the institutions. So it's public information, anyone can go and look this up. We also believe that whether you are submitted or not is particularly important for less experienced academics. They are particularly vulnerable to not being submitted. And so these are basically, you know, saying the same thing, if you've heard of the Matthew Effect or accumulated advantage or positive negative feedback loops, they're all saying the same thing in that if you are submitted, there is a positive reward for you and so you are likely to do better research in the future. If you're not submitted, there is a negative reward for you, so you're likely to do worse in the future. So if there are any inequalities to begin with between, say, males and females being submitted to the REF, this will just emphasise that as you then move into the future. So even if the rates for males and females are spurious in the beginning, it will cause more inequality later, further down the road. And so because we think that these less experienced academics are the more vulnerable people in academia to the REF submission process, we look at the lecturer grade. I'm going to quickly go over this because I don't have a lot of time, but there is, for example, the Stern report in terms of literature related to this topic from 2016, which is quite a well-known report. And they find gender differences in submission rates, not just in economics, but across all the different departments, sorry, all the different disciplines in UK institutions. They also find evidence that there are incentives for departments to submit people, not necessarily with the best quality research, so, yeah, okay. Okay. Okay, okay, thanks, sorry. So then if you want to know more about the literature, we can talk about it later. Thank you. So what we use is the Royal Economic Society Women's Committee survey, which is just what Karen was talking about earlier, but it's a highly improved version of that. So our co-author, Richard, he went online and did a lot of research on the lecturers from this, that we have in this survey, and looked at their outputs, the quality of their outputs, whether or not they were submitted to the REF, things like that. So we have UK academic lecturers, we have all of them from 2008 to 2014, we know their submission status, whether they were submitted to the REF 2014 or not. We have their career status, so whether or not they're early career researchers or not, date of their first publication, number of assessable outputs in the period eligible for REF, and journals and rankings, co-authors and institution controls. We use a standard probit model and these are the results. So, sorry, summary statistics, and these are the results. So we find the unconditional gender gap of 13%, as you know, from the raw data. And I'm just going to go to the fourth column, which is right here. So that gets reduced to 9.7 percentage points when we condition for number of publications, number of working papers and all the other controls. Can I have one more minute, please? So the one thing that I would like to point out is that if you are an early, early career researcher, even after we condition for all these other characteristics, you are still a lot more likely to be submitted to the REF compared to the baseline, which is not early career researcher. And also one more thing, if you are from a department that did really well in the 2008 RAE grading exercise, which is the precursor to the REF, you are also a lot more likely to be submitted to the REF 2014. But this is stronger for males than for females. I'm going to skip that. So these are just some conclusions. Let me just say that we would like in the future to be able to track this cohort of lecturers and consider the longer term promotion and research output implications of their inclusion or exclusion from the REF. So that's what we would like to be able to do in the future. Thank you.
It's very interesting, if not a little bit depressing, some of the results in the, in the two papers. So just before we, just before I kick off with my comments, I thought I'd do a bit of real time stuff and I thought we'd have a lot of count of the number of men and women in the room. And so, and also, given, you know, we have measurement error in data, I asked three of my co-authors who are sitting in here to do the same thing as well. So it looks like, of course, people come and go a little bit, and so the men are perfectly accurate, but it was, it seems as if 58 women and 37 men. So let's face it, straight away, we're talking to a selected sample here, women are massively overrepresented in this room, whereas they're less represented in the profession to start. So that's one empirical observation that I think we could start with, which is probably quite useful. Okay. So just to summarise very quickly, the seemingly persistent gender wage difference amongst academic economists, and there's some changes in composition in that over time, but they seem to be fairly persistent and not shifting very much through time. There's been progress unemployment gaps at different levels and so the position has improved over time, but the progress seems to be relatively slow. And in the REF has been gender gaps at lecturer level in rates of submission to the last, last exercise. Okay, so I just want to make three points, well, three sets of comments I just want to make on these kind of issues. The first one's about gender gaps in the academic economics profession, the second one's about gender issues in the REF, and the third one, I actually think we really just ought to be getting a practical policy discussion together on this stuff because the rate of change is pretty slow. Okay? And so I'm going to put some forward, forward some discussion about practical policy issues of relevance to one and two, after I've made my comments on one and two. Okay. Okay, so there's four, there's actually four observations on each, on each, each of these areas that I wanted to make. One of which is that not unlike the overall labour market, where the overall labour market stands now, if you look at gender wage differentials across the whole of the workforce, there's very little or even no gender gap on entry, particularly if you look within education groups. Actually, if you look at low education groups, actually there's a gender gap in favour of women entering the labour market in their teenage years compared to men. So actually, the position actually doesn't look particularly unlike what's, what's there in the overall labour market. Second thing is the idea that many people say, oh, this is all going to be okay, it's all going to fix itself, because, you know, if you, if you kind of think about what's going on in terms of cohorts over time, there's, you know, at some point we'll converge. Actually, if you look at the numbers really, the rate of convergence is pretty slow and the fact the wage differentials are still not moving and narrowing in the face of increased, if you want, increased supply of women at higher levels, is, is, suggests it's pretty slow that. And so I think when we think about practical, and so the third point is related to that as well, the promotion gaps are narrowing, but they're still very big. And so the rate of convergence is pretty slow. The other observation, which maybe is, is, is an obvious one, the economics profession is much worse on other aspects of diversity and it's not so bad on gender compared to some other disciplines, it's terrible compared to some, but on other things, like on BME status, it's pretty awful. And actually, on people coming from working class backgrounds, from low income families, it's pretty awful. And we ought to be thinking about the whole kind of issue. If, if, if our objective function is we care about gender, race, income inequalities, family background inequalities, then I think, you know, we really ought to be very concerned about, about some of these things and actually try and do something about it rather than just, well, I'll save that on the last slide, oops. Okay. On the REF, I've got a little less to say. Again, economics relative to other disciplines, well, it's not the worst, but it's clearly not the best either. It's better than some of the, better than some of the physical sciences, but it's not very good relative to other social sciences. On the lecture issues, yeah, it's kind, it's kind of interesting, but what seems to be happening, certainly if we follow the Stern recommendations, it's yet to be completely determined, but it seems like everybody will be submitted to the REF. So this issue about women at lecturer level not being submitted, well, they'll have to be submitted and so it isn't really so much, so much of an issue. And again, I'm going to put D down there again as diversity, which is actually a relevant issue in the REF for economics to be thinking about as well. As I say, if our objective function is about achieving gender and race equality, which I'm a big fan of, I know some people aren't, and that's going to speak to on the next slide a little bit as well. Okay, so practical observations, let's not just pay lip service to these issues. The rate of convergence isn't that fast, we should do something about it. Okay, so what could we do? Well, I think there's three things here, I've got a fourth, a fourth one that I might throw in as well, given this is the RES Women's Committee. So let's have a proper discussion about issues to do with equal pay and let's have a proper discussion about issues to do with positive discrimination and affirmative action and let's try actually to weigh up what the benefits and the costs of those two things are properly, rather than just saying, oh, you know, you know, no, positive discrimination is really bad, costs too much. So let's actually think a little bit more carefully about it, because if we actually think in a more dynamic setting, actually, that, that actually, for example, if we adopted some form of affirmative action or positive discrimination and pointed some people to particular levels, of course you can start offsetting any costs associated, if there are positive role model effects in due course, if, again, if our objective is about trying to achieve gender and race equality. And something else I'd like to say here as well, and I think, I think the gender mix in here actually may say something about this, is if people actually want to say the status quo is good, then I'd like them to come up with some evidence of why they think that's actually true. So I thought it was rather interesting in, in, in even more poorly attended RES AGM, the RES were talking about their consultation that they've been, they've been undertaking. And actually, there was a bunch of people who said that actually diversity issues are not a problem in economics. So I'd like those people to tell us why diversity problems are not an issue in economics. I think that would be rather interesting to see, present some evidence on that. And then the other thing, I suppose, you know, the last observation before I shut up is that, you know, the RES does have a lot of reserves and could actually probably throw some money at this issue in a nice targeted way of saying so. More money at this issue.
As a feminist and an economist, I'm regularly asked, what do the two have in common? And my answer is always, not nearly enough. And so I'm starting here with a mosaic of the goddess of commerce, note, not the god of commerce. It comes from a monument to 20th century American capitalism, the Woolworth Building, which is one of America's first skyscrapers. Now, the two papers presented in this session add to a mountain of statistical evidence that economics has a gender problem. That includes Alice Wu's now very famous work on gender stereotyping in economics, Erin Hengel's paper presented at the recent American Economic Association Conference, publishing while female, Betsy Stevenson and Hannah Zlotnick's work on the lack of female presence in economic textbook examples, and Heather Sarsen's work on how men and women in economics benefit differently from co-authorship. Now, in terms of the particular papers presented to us today, I think one of the great strengths is the comparisons both over time and across different disciplines within academia and with the economy-wide gender gap. I think it's only by benchmarking how we're doing in economics with what's going on in academia more generally and in terms of the economy more generally that we can really see where we stand. One of the most interesting takeaways for me was in terms of the evidence that women's earnings seem to be based more on publications and research income compared with men, whereas men's earnings within the economics profession tend to benefit more from being at a top six department and at an older university. And that difference, I think, is telling us something and should concern us. And I think the other important takeaway with regard to the, the other paper is the arbitrariness of decisions about submission for REF. So as Christina noted, there's a, there's, the majority of the variation in the regressions that she presented cannot be explained. That suggests a real problem. I think it's useful to bear in mind in regard to both papers that it's likely that they're presenting a lower bound, that the problem is actually much greater than these papers suggest. So for example, when it comes to gender wage gaps and the Oxfamca blind decomposition, there are a number of common recognised biases that are known in regard to that type of approach. Selection bias, for example, that we can try to alleviate with the Heckman two-stage process, biases that arise with the way in which age enters into the regression, and differences in access to endowments that can mean that the standard approach is missing out on something. Now, that's not a criticism of these papers, just a realisation that as a profession, we know that we might not be entirely capturing discrimination or the more general problem with this type of approach. And so what I want to do is to focus our minds on the raw data and that is, at the end of the day, the under-representation of women in economics at all levels. Here is the data for the US. Here we have female professorship in Berkeley. Economics is the worst of all the subjects, even some notable STEM subjects. And here we have undergraduate students in economics in the UK. Economics compared with some STEM subjects, including maths, and we can see how poorly we perform. Now, the other mainstay of academic work are the books that we publish and again, this adds to our mountain of evidence that we face a problem. Two books here in regard to two of the big economic problems we face. Secular stagnation, slowdown in growth, and capital in the 21st century on inequality. Secular stagnation, published by Baldwin and Toiling, has around 21 contributors, not a single one is female, gender doesn't receive a mention. Piketty's book mentions gender once. Evidence of the gender gap raises two questions, the causes and the consequences. I'm going to point out three deep issues, three adverse consequences. First of all is the way in which the lack of women has affected the bread and butter of economics, the types of questions we are. of questions we ask, the measurements that we make, and the tools and assumptions that we use. And I point you here to Julie Nelson's work. Secondly, our understanding of the past, of how we got to where we are today, a rich economy today, and lessons for poor countries. And there, I think, gender, in particular women's freedom, has been neglected. And then thirdly, our understanding of present day economic problems, things like inequality and secular stagnation, where gender again doesn't get much of a look in. In terms of what we do going ahead, then ultimately what we face is a vicious circle where the lack of women in economics has shaped the way that economics has developed as a discipline in a way that I believe has put off a diverse group of economists feeding back to the lack of women. And we're in that virtuous circle. And ultimately, the question that we face as a profession is this, lean in versus lean out. Do we change women or do we change economics? No prizes for guessing my own answer.